...Monday, August 3rd, a little bit after 6:30 PM. And I am going to give a wild guess that we have some veterans in the audience for this time. And if you would all please rise to the plate of allegiance, I've got the veterans here, please. I'll turn it over to you all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your service, everybody. Keep plaid. Evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Is that on?
It is on.
Yes.
We can't miss your presentation. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we're so appreciative and grateful for all of our civic organizations in this community that it do so well to get back to the community. And tonight, we're recognizing a local resident who fostered an idea to recognize our veterans and honor them in a very special way. And just a few moments will bring them forward, Council. Godfather, we just pray that you bless Mark Stockwell and his family with good help. We pray especially for the Outback State House and all of its folks for everything they did to help make this a success. And Lord, as we are reminded, as the school year commences, we once again ask for your hand of protection for all of our students, their parents, and all that they do to our sporting activities. You just continue to bless and protect this town. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chief. So moving on, first item of business is the appreciation and recognition of the First Annual Oviedo Veterans Tribute Fund. And this is, is this yours, sir? Your honor? I'm sorry? Chief?
Chief. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Well, we were approached by Mark Stockwell. He had a vision and a plan to recognize the veterans over the independence holiday. He was well aware of the veterans tribute that was being built at Beal Park. And he approached myself and the city manager announced if we might come partner with them in their efforts and be the blessings of the recipients of that as well. And in fact, it was very successful. A lot of veterans had a wonderful time, playing in the golf tournament as well. We're extremely grateful for Outback State House, David Weekly Homes, and other whole sponsors and so forth. But tonight, I thought it would be proper to recognize all these folks that went to this effort. This is the first year, we're very grateful that the City of Oviedo Veterans Tribute Fund is the recipient of the first annual. So I'm going to ask Mark Stockwell to come up for just a moment, and then if you would join me on some plaques down here to present to all the Outback State House sponsors as well. Mark?
Thank you, Chief Lars. You took my spiel away.
It makes it easy on you.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity, council people. A lot of people have asked me, where did this thought come from, what we want to do? I think you all agree, 2015 has not been a very good year for press coverage for both the veterans and the police force. To be honest with you, I'm a member of the press, and I am appalled with the social outlets and the vision that people have shared in talking about what's happening in fabrication. And I just felt in my heart that we need to do something to bless the veterans. My background, basically, I've got family members of the press serving in the military and those that have also served in the past. For 30 years, I've been doing charitable golf tournaments throughout the state of Florida. Previous golf coach at UCF, teaching program down in Miami. You can tell I've got a passion for golf. My dad, I probably faulted his footsteps because he did charitable golf tournaments as well. And I just like to thank my dad for instilling in me the desire and fortune to be able to go ahead and reach out to the community. Thank you, Dad. With this in mind, I looked at some opportunities, what we could possibly do. And knowing that the Oviedo Land Development Park is going to be Oviedo, so there's going to be a dedication for the Oviedo Veterans Tribute. I got with my good friend over at the Outback across the street, Alberto, shared a vision. We need to do a golf tournament. Outback, why don't you guys go ahead and host it? I'll direct it for you. So when thinking about that, I got with Chief Lars and of course Brian Cobb, city manager. He just shared my vision, what I wanted to do, but I wanted to do something a little bit different. Normally, when you do a golf tournament, your main focus is to try to raise as much funds as you can for that entity. That's your focus. I wanted to do a little bit different because I wanted to go ahead and bless those veterans right now for the service and what they provided for us. So when thinking of that, we got the approval. I said, we're going to do something different. We're going to go ahead and step out of faith. And if you're a veteran, you're going to get to play for free. You're going to have free golf, free food, free drinks. Not a bad deal. A small token for the service they provide for this country. So with that going into place, we went ahead and made brochures, set things up, got everything in line. And you'd be amazed, the veterans had contacted me, and they would ask, what kind of documentation and papers do I have to show you to prove that I'm a veteran? Well, I really wasn't ready for that. I looked at them and said, you know what? I'm from Miami. What are your coordinates? Your word is your word. If you say you're a veteran, I'm going to take you for your word. If you're not, your conscience is going to deal with you. And then I had to, besides that, I know the Nellie and the boys, and I hate to see them go down to C800 or something, but I swear. But with that in mind, I knew we had challenges. I looked at the calendar, 4th of July, I wanted to focus around 4th of July, do within the same fireworks, we'll do it on Friday. The challenges that we had were many, because, one, we're not going to have the revenue coming in, I just want to hopefully cover my costs. I looked at this, I talked to several entities and what they could do to help out. And we decided that we could go forth on this, and we would allow those offers to go ahead and play for free, but we would pursue an opportunity where we could go ahead and get outsiders to help and support what we're trying to do, not under my vision. With the help, I just wanted to share, there's many people I wanted to thank for what they did in helping with this cause. One, I can't thank enough Walter Mack and his staff with Outback, the three managers, Alberto, Enrique, and Jeremy, and Chef Help, Matt. They did an outstanding job. The food was just delish, everybody complimentary about the whole situation. Wanted to thank Brian Woodruff, he's the head pro over at Clean Rivers, for helping you with behind-the-scenes details a lot of people don't know, and also for getting the course up to par, so I'm confident. And then, I also wanted to thank, and I see you have a sign here already, several individuals and companies that bought into the idea and invested in purchase and sponsors whole signs. Again, such is the one I've got here. This is from David Weekly Homes, who's a major sponsor, Bogdowp, SUV, he's the exclusive builder for over here in Oviedo and the park. So with this, my focus was is to see what we could do, is just go ahead and bless, bless back the veterans and give them praise. It was a good turnout, we had a lot of fun, and I'm proud to announce that I want to go ahead and present to you, Mayor, and to the Oviedo Veterans Tribute, a check in the amount of $2,611.37.
Mayor, before you speak, I would like to invite Walter Mack to come over. I know he wants to share a few words. Can you, please?
Just want to say, thank you for having us today. And being a former Marine veteran myself, this was near and dear to my heart, so when they brought it to us...
On the ground, everybody. There we go.
So when they brought the, Mark brought the idea to us, we were all on board with it, and wanted to do whatever it took to make sure it was a success. It's a part of Outback's philosophy to share and just give back to the community. And now that I'm the new joint venture partner for this central Florida region, we're going to be a part of it for many years to come. So thank you all for having us, and appreciate it. Thank you.
We would start with our lead host. We put this all together, Mark. Mark, come up, please.
Thank you very much. Let me just read what this says here. This is, it reads, the city... City of Oviedo Veterans Tribute Award of Merit is hereby presented to Mark Stockwell through leadership and coordinating first annual golf tournament honoring the Oviedo Veterans Tribute at Oviedo Land Park. Mark, thank you so much. Walter, we have exactly the same viewers from the City of Oviedo Veterans Tribute. It's the award of merit. Thank you so much for wanting to be invited. Alberto. Alberto, again, City of Oviedo Veterans Tribute Award of Merit. Thank you to you, your Outback team, the great restaurant that you have over there. It's all refurbished now, has everybody visited it? Great job. Thank you so much. Support these guys. Enrique, again, City of Oviedo Veterans Tribute Award of Merit. Thank you so much for all your help. What do you do, Brian?
I used to be a part of the Outback in Oviedo till I handed the reins. Now I'm really part of the Outback, but they put it in my work.
Terrific. My daughter used to work for the Women Outback, maybe you just don't, but went here in Oviedo. Jeremy, again, now, City of Oviedo Veterans Tribute Award of Merit. Thank you so very much. And which is your job?
I am the proprietor of the English Springs.
Terrific. Well, again, thank you so much for all your support. Tell me we cannot say it, how can we? I've done it, don't we? The idea that you had, say it like we are. Come on, come on up front. Don't worry about us. Yeah, don't worry about it. Marry, gentlemen, thank you so much for all your donations. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I know we always miss you in a crowd, right? Everyone always misses you in a crowd, but it's good. Chief, do you have anything else for us on the side? All right. Thank you again, everyone. All right, so moving right along, we have got several other items for us. Mr. Cobb, you have anything for us?
Uh, no, Mayor.
All right. Moving on, item number two is the approval of the minutes for the July 20, 2015 regular session and the July 22nd, 2015 special session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so. So, motion second, any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call a vote. All those favor the motion approved, you signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion against. Very well, it was aye, right? Moving on, we have a public comment. This is a chance for anybody in the audience to address council. I have no written request. Is there anybody who'd like to do so? Seeing that, I will close public comment. We move on to the consent agenda, which tonight are items four through two for this pleasure of council. Mr. Mayor, council may like to make a motion to consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Counselor, can you hear? Counselor, shake. Mr. Cobb, last one question.
Item number eight, design services in new police station headquarters under RFQ 15-3. I just want to remember, are we putting the cart a little bit ahead of the horse here? Or what exactly are we trying to do? Just, we haven't had any real discussion about it.
What this is, Mayor, it is an approval of the ranking of the various design professionals. We did an RFQ asking for evaluations of design professionals to evaluate the existing fellow safety building and to give us guidance on what we can use that building for. There are four aspects of this project. One is doing a needs analysis for the police department. Another one is to determine whether or not the building, the existing building, can be used to meet those needs or if it can, what needs to be done to it so that it can. Whether or not, if the building cannot meet those needs, then what would be needed for us to build a new building? And then fourthly, if the building cannot meet those needs, what can we use that building for? This is just to approve the ranking, to allow us to go and to negotiate a contract with the number one architectural firm, obviously, as in any case that we have an RFQ, we cannot negotiate with that firm, we'll move down to the second firm. But right now, it's just to get them on board, get the scope of services defined, which we would have to bring back to the city council for approval.
My only concern is, don't put the cart too far ahead of the horse, because the city council has an immediate determination on the much-needed police facility. And before we start spending money on designing something, designing something new, or deciding that that building doesn't work because of someone's opinion, I think it really needs to be clear that the number one choice is to rehabilitate the building, make it meet their needs, or at least keep it up here, just on loose discussions, the council is at on this issue. Right. I think that those are discussions that we can have once we get the firm. Do you want to bring this back to us for approval on these costs? And answer my question. Is there anything else? During that, I'll call a vote. Motion table is to adopt the consent agenda, items four through 13 as presented. I would favor a motion to signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion against. Moving on to item number 14, it's ordered as number 1626, amendments to the Land Development Code, articles 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. Mr. Cobb?
Mr. Booth, will you please read that, Mr. Cobb? This is the mayor. An order from the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending a land development code to the City of Oviedo specifically, land development code article 1, preamble, article 2, administration, article 3, development agreements, orders and permits, article 4, zoning districts and regulations, and 6, downtime execution regulations relating to application processes, providing for legislative kinds of intent, providing for savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for stability, providing for codification and correction of script errors, and providing for an effective date. And that's the order, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Mr. Cobb? Thank you, Mayor. The Florida statutes requires that the local government body conduct two public hearings on any ordinance proposed to amend the land development code. This is the first of the two public hearings. Staff and city attorney have been working on these proposed amendments to the land development code based on the information and guidance and direction gathered at the various city council work sessions that have been conducted throughout this process. The staff and random obviously provides an explanation or summary of the various proposed amendments. The Development Review Committee reviewed these amendments at its 30th July 9, 2015 meeting and recommended several changes to the ordinance. Those changes are listed in your agenda memorandum, and those have also been incorporated into the ordinance. July 15, 2015, the planning zone appeals board conducted a public hearing, first day statute, and recommended approval with the recommendations of the Development Review Committee. And they also had one additional recommendation, and that was that the land planning agency, what will be called the land planning agency, be assigned the duties that are currently assigned to the hearing officer. Now, the ordinance has not been revised to reflect that proposed change. However, the staff does concur with the recommendation. Should the city council agree with the planning zoning appeals board, then it would need to provide direction as part of the motion to schedule the second public hearing to transfer those duties from the hearing officer to the, what will be known as the land planning agency. It is recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and then schedule a second public hearing for Monday, August 17, 2015. Dr. Correa, Dr. Fruitt, and Ms. Pierre are all three here tonight, and they have worked closely with Mr. Fruitt, should you have any questions about the proposed amendments. That is my presentation.
Thanks. Now, as Mr. Cobb mentioned, this is a public hearing, and I have no written request, so I would like to address council on ordinance number 1626. During that, we will close the public hearing, and I move to entertain a motion to schedule a second public hearing for ordinance number 1626 on August 17, 2015, at approximately 6:30 PM, here at Oviedo City Hall, in the Oviedo City Council chambers, 400 Allison Avenue Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765. So, motion second, on the motion table?
Uh, yeah. But then we could be a lot more here to describe what this land planning agency would be made up of, and how would we encompass, and who would be on, and things like that. You know, that's something that would be hearing officer, you'd bless it all the time, because there's no consideration of what that land planning agency do. Or is it PZA? Or is it the county officer?
The land planning agency does say, it is, they are taking on the duties, or modified duties of the current planning zoning appeals board. It is more of a statutory role, against going back to the old name, land planning agency, or local, local planning agency, it's more of a statutory role, quite honestly, dealing with properties, planning, zoning, and that, and the hearing officer is basically, the duties for the hearing officer, and Dr. Correa, I'll make Correa jump in, but the duties the hearing officer are basically for appeals. And so, the planning zoning appeals board recommended that, well, instead of the hearing officer handling those appeals, why not let the local planning agency do that as well? So, basically, the local planning agency has more to do with land use and zoning, less to do with development.
So they would appeal from who, and where, where would these guys come from?
The...
We'd have, the city council makes the decision, who's...
No, no, basically, the decisions of the land use administrator would be appealed to the hearing officer.
The land use administrator in some places?
In some places, you are, yes.
And that would go down to the PZA hearing officer, that would replace the hearing officer?
Now, I think there's a provision that if council serving is the...
I'll just make the sure.
Yeah, there's no appeal of camps.
Right. If council serving is land use administrator, then they'd deal with top of the law, go straight to the courts. But if it's, it is a appeal of the land use administrator as the city manager, then that would go to the hearing officer, and appeal of the hearing officer would then come to the city council, go to the courts.
Well, in Europe, you just come right up. That's what I'm going, okay, I'm missing, it seems like the thing to step back. I had another step in my steps.
Well, right now, it's, right now, the, actually, there are more steps right now.
Right now, the land use administrator, appeal of the land use administrator goes to the Development Review Committee.
The Development Review Committee then goes to, well, it can either go to the city council or it can go to the planning zoning appeals board.
Streamlining...
It's not adding anything.
If we're going to streamline, then I'd say, why do I streamline to the PZA to then another appeal to us? And then you'll appeal to court. I mean, I'd use the highest authority to say, if you're going to appeal your decision, being the land use administrator, appeal to the council. How many appeals do we really have here?
13 in the park between.
I kind of agree with Councilman Shankware, it gets a little confusing for me, of why you add another, it seems like we're adding another step, and I don't know who that is yet. I don't understand who makes up this land, local planning agency, who are the members?
The members are whoever the city council appoints, just like the city council appointed the planning zoning appeals board. The difference is, the planning zoning appeals board has seven members, they're appointed to three-year terms. The new local planning agency will have five members appointed to two-year terms.
I was just carrying on, it's a whole new board. That's what you were saying, was the PZA. Yeah, that's what I said.
No, listen, they were serving in the same manner, they were serving the same manner that the PZA does.
So, let's clarify, because I think we're all maybe a little bit confused. Are we just adding the PZAs we know right now? Are we adding a land planning agency? What are we doing?
You're changing the name of the PZA to LPA.
And then add again.
And you're establishing that you will have no less than five members. You can keep seven members, you can have nine, or you can go no less than five, so if you ever decide that...
I get it. So we're keeping one board, we're regaining LPA like it used to be. We still don't have a DOA like we used to have, because that, those roles now fall to LPA. Correct? We're eliminating DRC.
Yes.
Because that was a redundant step. Well, it became a redundant step, for setting a special duty. And now we have the hearing officer. So the question that, or the debate right now is, any appeals of the land use administrator being Mr. Cobb, do they go to a hearing officer, do they go to LPA, or do they send right to us? Dr. Correa, you have anything to add to that discussion?
Let me add one thing. It eliminates the concept of decisions of the land use administrator, city manager, being appealed to his staff, which is DRC. So that makes relatively no sense.
Oh, yeah, the way it is now, we're cleaning up the way it is now, I understand that, that's good.
So the issue is, do you want to have a buffer between you and the...
Right. Now, do we have to create this local planning agency? Are we doing this simply for this? If we do, if it's that, we just send now, appeal straight to us, PZA's going to be PZA.
LPA still is, LPA stays LPA, but would not have its jurisdiction over those appeals.
Why are we removing that role? Most planning agency would call it LPA.
We were right the first time, called that, and we took out these appeals.
And there's not so much appeals, because now that that is, do you want to put more appeals back in the body that you took?
Either way, rename, rename LPA.
Yes.
That's what I recommend. That's what I recommend, either way, it's going to be renamed LPA, which doesn't matter. Have the roles that are redefined in here, and now the only one that we're talking about, really, is, they take the role of the hearing officer, whatever the hearing officer is, primarily that's the one role that they're probably, a couple of other little things, I'm sure, hearing officer, the appeals, take that one role and either give it to them or have it come directly to council. That's really all we're talking about, because they're going to come LPA no matter what, either.
Well, the LPA is just a...
Same thing, change it.
Same board. Now we have the definition that the board can be reduced to five, so we cannot have, you know... you know...
Do we have to reappoint walk, or is it simple as, is that, do we have, before we give LPA, PZA, we have to do the whole process?
Yeah, we have to transition.
Okay, that's true.
The proposal that you have in front of you has the hearing officer. So, we have the hearing officer, and they have, hearing officer has two functions. Either they would, he would, the managers of the street would refer some subject to the hearing officer, or they would check appeals, he would review appeals. When we presented that, PZA heard our presentation, said that the issue of the hearing officer that we had was proprietary issues, right? Hearing officer would pay this additional cost per seat. So, PZA have raised issue that they could be the board to review their appeals. So, at this point, the question is that should we eliminate here the hearing officer role and replace it with the PZA or LPA now, or as discussed now, should we post it as a counter?
Well, that's fair enough. Let me ask you another question. If the Alphacan goes to the new LPA for their appeal, and they don't have the answer from LPA, where do they go?
City council.
If the Alphacan came to the city council first, and we have the answer there for muscle in their appeal, where do they report?
If the city council is acting as the land use administrator, and we have that spelled out in the code, the others have to report. Because the government, city council is the ultimate approval authority for the city.
Okay. We'll see how it goes, only just, can you go up and down here, and then we'll move back and forth? That, and then you have...
No, I'm all right with that. I understand, better now.
Yeah, just a couple points, we have another hearing, but you know, in the spreadsheet and the staff report, you know, the orange one that you guys put forward, to me, is much cleaner, but I, you know, I would just recommend for me, that anybody who's appealing a decision is very upset, let them come right to us, because I think that's where they want to be anyway. You know, another layer, another night, you know, they may not take that serious, they'll take us serious, because let us be the final stuff, and that would be my recommendation. The PZA transitioning over to this LPA, I was reading, you know, LPA is what it's called all around the state, so we're just kind of cleaning it up and making it fall in line, that's what everybody else calls it, but I think that really needs to be five, and honestly, I think you're creating a new board, there should be applications, and people who've served on other boards, I would like to see their attendance rise. And the reason I like five is because when you have seven people, I say, well, I won't come to four or five meetings, and that's not good. If you have five, it puts more, you know, on us, and I realize the volunteer things come up, but I think, you know, it's up to the rest of my colleagues and council members to expect, but I think you, you want to reappoint that, then it needs to be five, and you need to take applications, and we need to look at, and if they've served on that previous board, let's see what their attendance looks like, because that's an important board. And if they don't show up four or five times in a row, that's fine. You know, so I'd like to see, give some people in the community an opportunity to work to apply, that's the only board we have, and it'll be helpful, more important, so, but I think you cleaned it up nicely, and it's more fun. Absolutely, it should, there should be the final one, and then they can go a quarter day away. And that's another step, so...
I agree. I agree with you, I think we should call the council, and I think we look at whether we reappoint a single or whatever, I think it should be a full, look at elevation, you have a full application, it could be a reporter of all, but a full application.
I agree with that.
About five or seven?
I'm sorry?
Five or seven. I think, I think so, I think five is, it works out better to, seven, like you said,
you get a lot on there, and you feel like they don't have to come, you know, five are dedicated.
I, I, Alex, the only board we have is us, so what the citizens would be appointing. And I think that if we have members of this board as we pointed out for us, who are not so, and they're duty, then as the chairman, which did, it gets reported to us, and then it's an appropriate action, even though that action is uncomfortable, you know, just because you're a seven member board, doesn't mean that you don't show up. Work gets in the way.
Okay, seven. All right, seven.
All right, we'll debate that, because we're going to concentrate. All right, so consensus on hearing is we'd like the appeals of my office, instead of by the hearing officer.
So, we'll be eliminating the hearing officers?
No, we're just going to pay hearing officer, the next step after hearing officer, so we have some... Change of motion to say, I mean, you can... How do you like us to word that?
In fact, I think one thing, hearing officer has two assignments.
So, we have to eliminate, eliminate all of it, or eliminate the role for appeals?
That's why I'm going to make sure that we're still giving the opportunity to the other assignment, which was to refer interpretations to the hearing officers.
How do you like us to reword the motion?
Probably the better way, most simple way, is to go ahead and approve the ordinance. Staff knows what you want, so when staff brings the ordinance back, it will note the changes, and then you can move to approve the ordinance on second reading as it revises.
All right, so just call, call the questions to schedule a public hearing, answer the essence. Is there any other discussion on ordinance sixteen twenty-six in council? Staff have anything else for us to decide?
During that, I'll call a vote. The only motion on table currently is to schedule a second public hearing for August 17th, I believe it is, six thirty PM here in council chambers. On favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion against.
I do want to say thanks to staff, they did collect what we did, put together and said very well, within all this. We did that few meetings, and we did collect what we said.
That was just a curve ball, turn of the hand. All right, first reading of ordinance is, we have none resolutions, non-discussion items done, city managers report. Where is this, Mr. Cobb?
I have no report here.
I'd like to know. Mr. Group?
I have no report either, no football being run.
Is there a debate on tonight or something, or something like that, during the windows? I don't know. All right, so no public, the city attorney, Jeff and Pierre, quietly, correct?
No, I don't have...
Perfect, all right.
However, I just want to remind you, I already met with Ron and Mr. Cobb, I will not be here to begin the seventh team, so I won't miss the meeting and the budget meeting that week, but I have that down, and...
I got you all, sweetie.
I'm sorry?
You're off the scheme, comfortable? Just, they're probably just saying, you with us, a view with you. You gotta head to start.
I did.
Now, you gonna take your budget book with you wherever you're going?
I, I will.
Study it for a while, huh?
I'll take it with me.
All right, we'll be a quiz when you get back. All right, moving on, Councilor Rick isn't here, myself, I have no report, Councilor Chang?
I've got an upcoming concert.
That's right. August fifth, president, president for two weeks, certainly awesome. Well, actually, we have more than that coming up, if you want to continue more. September third, and then September 17th.
I saw that the movie in the park is scheduled too. You scheduled that? When's the first time? Is it September?
It's September, yeah, I don't have the exact date.
And that's going to be in Oviedo on Park?
Yes, ma'am.
We had some weddings last weekend. And so, I saw...
I had a wedding Saturday night.
I didn't work out. Australia's a wedding party, too?
We had a celebration of the wedding.
Wedding has, the celebrate, the wedding looked nice, because as the bride was coming around to the front, it was raining and drizzling outside, we're walking, and just as she came out from under, you know, that old ring, it stopped raining. She walked around, it stopped, that's a beautiful wedding, the rain stopped, and she went out front to be announced and called in, and so. She came into the front, as they were walking around the front, she came down the steps, and literally, just as she stepped out from under, the rain stopped.
I'm surprised they didn't bring her in from the stage, I guess.
But did they enter out well for Gribble? Happy with the way everything? That was the first one, right? So, you're working out.
First wedding, yes.
First one, that was back to back, that was the first back to back, I think events, too, so, they seem to be moving.
All right, I have to say, that facility is awesome, and you guys are doing a great job.
We're having an event there, and it's very nice.
All right, moving on, we are up to last, but certainly not an easy council meeting.
Nope, all of them there.
Future meeting dates, we have Monday, August 17th, 6:30 PM. Thursday, August 20th, a budget hearing, a budget workshop, I'm sorry? Just a workshop, right, so it's 5:30 PM. Then on Thursday, September 10th, we have a budget meeting and regular session. Then on Monday, September 21st, budget meeting and regular session. And on Thursday, the 24th, at 6:30 PM, we have a land development code work session. So, we've got busy time coming up over the next four or five weeks. You guys excited for budget? I'd like to hear. All right, any other business before the council? Mr. Cobb, Allen, Chris, council meetings?